I guess we're probably live. So we'll call the committee of the whole meeting to order at 12:30 PM. And I'll ask for a motion that committee of the whole adopt the agenda for the September 14th, 2020 committee of the whole meeting as presented. All in favor consensus. Gary. Last for a motion from Councilor McMillan that the committee of the whole adopt the committee of the whole minutes from August 10th, 2020 as presented.
I'll give you that motion.
All in favor by consensus. Gary. Good neighbor by law, Kara.
It's actually Jessica and Peter.
Oh, okay.
And this is one of those circumstances where it's actually Peter's report. So I'm just pulling it up and I will have a look and get started in a moment. So thanks very much for your patience today, Mayor and Council, and for inviting us to come to Committee of the Whole to speak about the Good Neighbor Bylaw. As a reminder for Mayor and Council, we started on the process of updating and redrafting some old bylaws and putting them into a new bylaw, and that resulted in the creation of the new Good Neighbor Bylaw. The pieces that we brought together into this new bylaw include what was formerly the nuisance and unsightly premises, the noise bylaw, snow and ice control, and we came to Committee of the Whole earlier this year in about February to talk to Committee of the Whole. Was it February of this year? I think it was February of last year. It was to talk to Committee of the Whole about the different topics that we might engage with our residents on. From that, we did engagement in April and May of 2019 and presented that report to Council in August of 2019. That report covered all of the different engagement that we had had for the Good Neighbor Bylaw, the Animal Bylaw, and the Traffic Bylaw. Excuse me. So we've had the opportunity to bring to Council the Animal Bylaw and the Traffic Bylaw, both of which have passed and entered into first reading. Administration's intention was to bring this new Good Neighbor Bylaw to Committee of the Whole and to Council earlier this spring for this preliminary conversation, followed by first reading, second reading, and third reading, and any public hearing when COVID-19 changed everyone's plans and put a slight hold on our timeline to bring this back to Council. Part of the reason that we wanted to come back to Council and just have a brief conversation prior to bringing the bylaw for first reading is there are a few things in the new bylaw that are proposed, which Council may wish to discuss. Prior to first reading, there are also some things that were done as a result of the engagement. We had intended to take a certain decision. We said in the engagement report that we would go a certain direction with the bylaw. And now, after drafting the bylaw and finishing off a few final details of research, we've discovered that that may not be possible. So we wanted to come to Council ahead of first reading so that there would be no surprises for Council and so that we could make sure to keep everyone well informed. Peter has just sent me a note to say he's on his way. He's having computer problems, so he'll join us, I'm sure, when he is able. At this point, I wanted to open it up for conversation about the draft bylaw and the report that was sent to Committee of the Whole. Should Committee of the Whole have any questions or things we would like to discuss? Or where we would like to take it from here? Perhaps we could dive into the three primary areas that Peter had laid out in his report to talk about? Before we jump into questions, how does that sound to everybody? Okay. So the first key piece that was a bit of a challenge with regard to drafting the new bylaw was the noise restriction. So the town's new land use bylaw is innovative and fantastic in a bunch of different directions. And one of the things that it has successfully done is taken about 20 different zones across town and consolidated them down to about four to six, depending on how you choose to look at the way the new bylaw functions. What that has done is it has created situations in different districts where houses are next to institutions like churches, schools, hospitals, and there are mixed uses throughout a bunch of different zones. In our previous noise bylaw, we had residential zones, industrial zones, and commercial zones, and they were fairly clearly delineated. So it was relatively easy to, you know, separate out the three of them and say, here's the noise restriction for residential versus commercial versus industrial. Because the new land use bylaw has done such a good job at integrating all of our community together, that's caused a complication with our noise restrictions. There is no more residential zone. That residential zone doesn't exist anymore. It's neighborhood districts and center and traditional and different terms like that. So it caused a bit of a challenge when we said that we would stay with the previous noise restrictions because those zones don't exist. So it's difficult to figure out how would we apply that fairly across town? How could we make it clear and simple for everyone to understand and then to enforce? So the proposal before you today in the new draft bylaw would be to actually just have one noise restriction all of the days of the week across the entire community. That way, it can be fairly and equally distributed everywhere. It's easy to understand. Everyone gets the same rule. The second piece that's a little bit different than what we had discussed is the snow removal exception. So we had talked about creating an exception for snow removal after significant snow events, thinking about how the city of Calgary has implemented that kind of an exception as well for their purposes. And there was a lot of conversation back and forth within administration and with senior leadership, trying to figure out and establish exactly what might be the best method to follow for the snow removal exception. At the end of the day, what is before you in the draft is an exception for snow removal so that the noise bylaw isn't being contravened if someone is removing snow. We haven't included a significant snowfall amount. We haven't included any timeline after the snowfall event. We've just included it as a safety measure because sidewalks need to be clear and safe for pedestrians. Parking lots need to be clear and safe for those who frequent those businesses and establishments. And so that is something that's before you in the draft bylaw as well. One final item that we wanted to highlight and point out for Council's consideration and discussion ahead of that first reading is graffiti. So graffiti was one issue that was in our engagement that had probably the broadest range of responses. It was quite a significant difference between remove it immediately and it's art. So we heard from community residents that it was the full gamut. What we've done with handling graffiti in the new draft bylaw that's before you is we've actually included it in the definition for the term nuisance. So nuisance and unsightly was a little bit unclear in our previous bylaw. We've worked really hard to clarify and distinguish between the two things. And by including graffiti into the definition of a nuisance, we've done a couple of different things. We've provided latitude for the peace officers that are enforcing the bylaw to go out and educate folks about what graffiti is, where it needs to be cleaned up, and then they're able to use the process laid out in the MGA, which works through remedial orders and I can't remember what the other type of order is called, offhand. But there's process within the MGA that provides them with two to four weeks to be able to respond to complaints, to clean up complaints, and to get these things taken care of. We did talk back and forth quite a bit among administration in internal meetings, and then again, meetings with senior leadership, to try and figure out what do we do about graffiti that is potentially offensive or inappropriate? We came to a place of deciding, maybe that's actually an internal policy, that the town would then go and reach out to these different folks who may have the inappropriate or offensive graffiti on their property and see how we can, from an internal town policy perspective, help get that covered up, taken care of, within a very short timeframe. The other piece that is interesting, which actually came up on a couple of different pieces within the engagement, and we've been mindful in creating this draft bylaw for Council's review, is the implications for town property. So specifically with graffiti, this would be then a question of how does the town wish to deal with graffiti on our own infrastructure, on our own assets and buildings, and different things like that? How might that apply? Some municipalities give themselves an exemption. Some hold themselves to a higher standard. It's more a question of what might the town wish to do with our own graffiti problems? And then as well, the question comes up as well for how the town might handle noise restrictions for our own work. We've given ourselves exceptions for emergency services, for folks who need to get, you know, emergency repairs done to water lines and things like that. And then we also need to contemplate snow removal for the town. We have provided the exception for residents everywhere that they can remove snow at any time of the day in this draft bylaw. And does that suit the town's needs and interests? Does that work in a way that would be beneficial for the town? So those were kind of the highlights of the three big areas that we wanted to review with Council today. And we also wanted to talk, just ask questions specifically. So those are laid out in the strategic questions section about each of those three different topics. At the end of the day, we're looking for a bylaw that is user-friendly for the residents of High River. If it's not easily understood, easily accessible, easy to implement, then we're not doing our best, I think. I think if we hand the residents of High River a bylaw that's simple to understand and follow, easy to clearly find if there's an infraction happening or not, that that's a real benefit to the community and to the residents. And then we also want to give bylaw services an opportunity to implement a bylaw that's easy for them to actually use and enforce. So there are a bunch of different things we're working to accomplish through this bylaw, but I think the draft that we've worked on to date has met most of the mark. So we're coming to Council for your input and discussion on these three key areas and any other items that Council may have noticed upon review. So Peter has joined me in the room, sans laptop. I would guess that means the laptop is not happening for him today. So perhaps I'll hand my laptop over to him to see if there is anything else. And then if there's any further discussion or conversation, perhaps we could have that then with you. Does that work?
Jessica. Do you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, you're good, Peter.
Good, okay. I just turn up the volume here a bit. Okay. Sorry about that, folks. Yeah, computer issue this morning. I ended up working on a Teams meeting, but having an access issue to the network. So at any rate, thanks, Jessica, for giving that overview of the Good Neighbor Bylaw. I kind of came in on part of it, so rather than kind of jumping in, I'll maybe kind of open it up for any questions or discussion or any clarity that you might need on this Good Neighbor Bylaw.
Counselor Masterman. You're muted.
Mayor Snodgrass, okay. I think I'm here. So what was that?
You're good. We can hear you now.
Thank you. So just a couple of questions on the graffiti item. And one is, I understand graffiti is also covered in the criminal code if the graffiti is of a hatred or racist nature. So we do have that to fall back on anything that is really, really nasty, right?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, yeah. And those are usually dealt with right away. Oftentimes, the RCMP are made aware of them, and they'll usually go out and deal with it right away.
Okay. And my other question, or my question was graffiti that's done on private property, and the owner is given a certain amount of time to clean it off? Or face a penalty? Is that? I'm just wondering, does the owner then have recourse through insurance to go after this in terms of property damage or something like that? I'm just wondering kind of what recourse there is for a private individual who, you know, whose house or business or whatever is defaced and we require a cleanup?
Yeah, correct. So as a private owner or a business, they can go through their respective insurance for damage that requires maybe repair or cleanup and so on, provided they have that coverage, I guess, and that ability to do it. But that would be their course of action.
Counselor McMillan.
I'm doing something wrong. Jamie, you need to use your hand, you know, in the sidebar. Do you know where I'm pointing to? Show participants. And then that's how you do your hand thing. Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. Peter, just for, I have a couple of comments and questions. Just for clarity, with the one, the noise restrictions, what is now the suggested timeframe? Like 7:00 AM till? That part I just couldn't understand in the report.
Yeah, so 10:00 PM till 7:00 AM would be that period of time for the noise restriction. And we're recommending that that apply to everyone across the community, which includes businesses and residents with the same time.
I like it because it would be just across the board. So I think it will be more simplified as well as enforceable that way. And then my other comment is I am glad to see that graffiti is being reviewed about like two weeks, one to two weeks. I understand about hateful that that should be down further, but I just think it's pretty hard for us to expect people to get it gone within 24 hours because some of the graffiti that I've seen that isn't hateful, but it's up really high on buildings. So I think it's only fair to give people a chance to get it off.
Correct in it. And as Counselor Masterman pointed out, if they want to, looking for cost recovery through their insurance and maybe an assessor to come out and have a look at it, might take a little bit of time as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Nychuk.
Thanks, Mr. Snodgrass. Coming back to that noise restriction. I like the continuity of having a single time, but I also don't like the idea of losing the residential aspect, and I think that's a key piece in our community from a lifestyle perspective. If all of a sudden you're going to lump in that seven in the morning is fine everywhere, I don't like how that plays in the residential area. I know it's difficult. I know you guys have been challenged with that, but I want to ensure that we haven't exhausted the ability to find a solution rather than just saying it's difficult. This is what we're going to do because it's difficult. I know I appreciate the quiet times in the community on long weekends and holidays. You know, on Sundays when it's quieter, it slows our community down. There's a sense of peace with it. You know, I also respect the fact that we've opened the land use bylaw up to be more inclusive of opportunity throughout the community. So I don't want to stifle that either, but I'd just like to see or hear what other counselors think of that. Again, I appreciate the continuity, but I don't know if a single time across the entire community is the right thing. Even so, if we say it's ease of enforcement, well, to be honest, the enforcement doesn't happen anyway. Let's all be real clear on that one. It's complaint-driven, and that in itself is problematic. So to say it's enforceable really holds no water with me anyway because nobody's out there doing anything with the enforcement piece anyway. I'd just like to hear what my other counselors think on that timepiece from 7:00 AM till 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Thank you.
Do you have an alternate timeframe that you'd look at in the residential areas, Michael?
Similar to what we have now, I guess. I get, you know, the challenge is differentiating, you know, where there's a business and where there's a residence right next to it. That was brought up before, where the hospital is right next to residential. Well, that's kind of a common sense piece. I don't think that has to be specific to the hospital and significant that residence is right across the street. People that live across from the street from the hospital understand there's going to be noise. I live across the street from Notre Dame. I understand there's going to be noise. I don't phone and complain when it's four in the morning and they're out there with snow blowers because they got to make it safe for the kids and the teachers and the people driving by. And so there's those, if we're talking about a Good Neighbor Bylaw, having stringent set parameters is kind of difficult. We're talking about the community understanding, living with each other. And how do we do that with continuity and understanding and caring for how we live with each other? So somehow I'm seeing that as part of this. Instead of having this hard and fast rule for this area and this area and this area, I don't want to say, but there needs to be a little bit of gray, maybe. And then hopefully, we've educated our municipal enforcement officers that in those situations, they would guide a complaint or a situation that was appropriate for that particular situation, i.e., let's use the hospital again, for example. You know, if an ambulance comes roaring down the road at three in the morning and it has its lights and sirens on for whatever safety reason it has to have, that's an understanding. We're trying to save somebody's life or, you know, there's certain situations where common sense takes effect rather than having a hard and fast black and white rule. And I think we can still preserve some of those pieces in our community, the residential areas, that have that calm and quiet during, you know, specific times, holidays, one day on the weekend, Sunday is traditionally where it's been. And then in the industrial areas, they're more open to conduct their business because they're in industrial area. And, you know, maybe there's some areas that don't even need a restriction at any time. I don't, you know, I just throwing different thought. So did that help or did that confuse Mayor Snodgrass?
I don't know. I get where you're going. Maybe I'll put it back to Peter if you guys have had conversations and about how to balance this out with the way Michael's. Can you?
Yes. And kind of what we had heard from the public was there was a majority that felt that keeping it the same. We could look at, you mentioned kind of targeting like having those quiet weekends and those quiet Sundays. We could still go back to having the timeframe go till eight AM, for instance, on weekends and holidays. And then, but still have that across the board for everyone. And I think most businesses will probably be okay with that. We just may have to explore the businesses that do maybe run a bit more of a 24/7. Maybe the 7:00 AM, as you alluded to, isn't going to be work for them anyways, and we may have to look at exemptions for certain businesses. But maybe as a whole, we can adjust the hours on a weekend for, similar to what we had done before.
Yeah, I'll pass it on to other counselors to get their opinion. Counselor Kinghorn's been waiting.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. I had a question about 26C, which talks about the vegetation on roads and properties. The word back alleys isn't included in there. Should we maybe put that in since there is a lot of issues with our back alleys? Peter?
I believe it's in the definitions for roads, but we'll have a look at that one to confirm that it's there.
You're correct. I believe it is under definitions, but we're specific under the bylaw, calling it roads and walkways. Maybe we should add that word. I would like to see it added anyways. And then we talked about various tree diseases, I guess. I'm not that up to speed on them, but I didn't see a black knot included in there. I suspect it's one. But I look at that, and then the town is infested with black knot, and we try to control it. But if we were to take down every tree in town that had black knot, I know in my yard alone, there's probably three or four would have to go. I would like to hear a little bit more from whoever's looking after that sort of thing these days or tree. I understand Kim's no longer with us, but whoever is taking over for that and just discuss that a little bit more. Thank you.
You know, you're not getting rid of black knot until you mow down all the Mercer Hughes land. It's just, you're not going to fight that one. Like you said, you're just going to have to mow everything down to get rid of that one. So those ones are tough. There's no question. Counselor Cooley.
Thanks, Mayor Snodgrass. And just a little follow-up to that. It's my understanding that firelight is probably the more concerning to have that in town. And as Mayor Snodgrass pointed out, getting rid of black knots is going to be virtually impossible. Just a little further to Counselor Nychuk's comments. I would like to see reduced time on the weekends and holidays. I can wrap my head around the standard during the week, but I do think there needs to be, you know, some sort of relaxation. And I agree, there needs to be some common sense. That's always not going to be able to be followed in every situation, but I think in order to make our communities more enjoyable, I think that we do need to have some relaxation and some quiet time there. Regarding snow removal, there's a level of snow that kind of the being able to go out and clear during the night is lifted. I didn't see that in the bylaw, or am I reading that wrong, Peter? Is there a level of snow that kind of allows for you to go in and do the snow clearing at any time?
No. Thanks, Counselor Cooley. We did explore it. We looked at a certain level, but we kind of looked at what Calgary was doing, and they started, they went away from having a certain level as opposed to just allowing snow removal whenever there's snow. And so we've taken that approach that after any type of snowfall, you would have this period of time that you would need to remove it and at any time of day. So that is a bit of a change there, and I think is that is a bit of a change there. And, and I think is, is good for a discussion on do we want to go down that route of if someone wants to clear their snow after whatever amount it is in early mornings of the hour, would we allow that exemption for it? But as far as snow removal itself, we didn't, we didn't put a certain measurement with it.
Okay, thanks. Here, one more question. I'm curious, and I asked this question a couple of years ago, back alleys, where you come out onto a sidewalk. I notice many areas where the homeowner ends at the back alley. And, and then you have a nightmare because the vehicle's driving over it. Is there a way or what do other communities do or can we do anything, you know, indicating, you know, no different than I have to mow my boulevard, if your property aligns with a back alley, you need to clear half of that back alley sidewalk?
Yeah, thank you. We did explore that a bit. That wasn't a common practice that we were seeing in other communities. And with a bit of discussion on kind of looking at what the enforcement might be of that, because it was more adjacent to an alley that was considered town property, the argument was made that that was more of a town responsibility, knowing that because of traffic on alleyways that come onto a road, that snow gets packed down or can be a bit iceier and heavier and can be quite challenging. So I think what we were finding after exploring that one, that it would be a difficult one to enforce. It wasn't a common practice that we were seeing in other communities and, and it would be a difficult one to maybe enforce.
Yeah, I guess that's my concern is what exactly you said. They're the most dangerous part of the sidewalks to walk on and to travel on. So, but I appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Counselor Masterman.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. So I just wanted to also go back to Counselor Nijek's invitation to express our thoughts on this. And, and I'm afraid I do like the single, the uniform time. And I'm not really sold on whether that time is seven or eight. But I think, I think just as we, as we harmonized speed limits in school zones, playgrounds, I don't want to have to think about it. Like, it's, you know, I have to go 30. I don't know when sunset is, you know, all that. I don't know if it's a school day or a holiday or, it doesn't matter. And same with noise. People are going to make noise. And, and somebody who's told they have to wait until eight to sort of, or even seven to start a power saw or to start reshingling their, their house on a, on a day that's going to be 90 above. And so they want to start early. You know, it just, you know, I just don't think we want to give too many choices. I think we, we just decide on a time and if that time's seven o'clock, and if we want to make it eight or 7:30, then, you know, and as somebody else noted anyway, we're not enforcing this. You know, not that I have ever been aware of. Has anybody ever got a ticket for out mowing their lawn, you know, before a certain time or using a power saw or anything else? So I don't know. I just kind of like the one time, you just know that's the time. You let your conscience be your guide, obviously. And, and a lot of people are going to follow it just because that's a time. And there are not going to be people who just don't do it no matter what time we choose. So that's my, my feedback on that. Thanks.
Counselor McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. And in response to Counselor Nijek's request for feedback, I'm along the lines of Counselor Masterman. I like the continuity factor. I really enjoyed with the harmonized school zones that I don't have to figure things out. And also, I think this is based about human courtesy as well, because I don't suspect that everyone's going to pull out their whipper snippers at 7:00 AM just because they can, right? I think it's about being, the true essence of the Good Neighbor policy is being a good neighbor. And so if you are a good neighbor, you think before you do anything noisy to begin with. And if you don't care about your neighbors, you just do what you want. And I know myself, because just like you, I live across the street from the school, and our problems are more at 3:00 AM with people yelling out in the parking lot. And to me, that, you know, that's, and that's a constant. I do wish enforcement would go over there. But the reality is, I don't think people who are thoughtful are going to be making exorbitant amounts of noise. I know in my own neighborhood, I've never once thought, oh, you know, there they go mowing their lawn at 6:00 AM. I think people are very cognizant. They sleep in. So I like the continuity.
That's it for questions. I agree with continuity, too. I just think it's simpler. And I 100% agree with Counselor McMillan. It's just be a nice neighbor. Don't need, we don't need a bylaw. But we do need a bylaw. But you know what I mean? Anything else, Peter? Jess?
No, I think, I think where we, we know where we stand for the noise bylaw, what direction it goes. So we do appreciate that. And, you know, is, and then we agree, we struggled with this. That's why we brought the question to council. And, and there really is no easy answer. It's, we could really go either way. And I think either way would actually work fairly well. So we do appreciate that.
Well, we'll be having a public hearing and everything on this as well, right?
Correct. That's correct. Yeah. The other two questions was the snow removal and allowing snow removal at any time after a snowfall. That's, that's a little bit outside of the box. That's, that's different. And but I, if, if council's okay with where we're going with it, then we can still proceed with that one.
I like where you're going with it because there's not a bigger complaint we get in the wintertime that the streets aren't clear. So you can't do it at noon on Wednesday in a lot of these areas, right? So it might have to happen at five o'clock in the morning or midnight, three o'clock, like when we're doing our downtown stuffs. So I think keeping that one wide open is, is a very good idea.
Yeah. And it was, it was a matter of treating residents the same as we would treat co-op who needs to clean his parking lot at three in the morning. As if a resident, if he has to get an early start and needs to clean his snow at four in the morning or five because of a significant snow, then it was, was being fair to everybody that way.
That guy ain't up anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
If I look out at four o'clock in the morning and see that much snow, I'm going back to bed.
Correct.
And then the other one, the graffiti. I did have a couple of questions on the graffiti. When we're looking at, you mentioned about debating, you know, is it graffiti or is it art? You know, I look at it, well, if you had permission, it's art or could be art, your art. If you didn't, on whatever space, it's graffiti. I don't care how nice it is. It's just.
That's just my opinion on that one. Now, on the private business, residential, non-town-owned property, you know, the timeline to clean, I think that's, you got that nailed down. But what if they, what if they just say, I'm going to leave it regardless of, you know, if it's offensive, well, they absolutely have to. But like, what's the, what's the repercussions of forcing this thing to, to get them to do something, Peter?
Well, because it's in a bylaw now, we can, we can proceed with it to, to have it completed. So if that, if that means where we're enforcing the bylaw and, and so there could be a fine with it. And then we may go in as the town to clean it up.
What if we hate it and they like it?
As far, yeah, where they're thinking it's art.
I don't know. That's going to be a rare circumstance, but I just thought, what if the owner just says, I don't know, it's art now. This is going to cost me 10 grand to fix it. So I'm going to call it art.
Yeah.
I don't know. That's a.
Might be a challenge, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions from council? I'll quit my rambling because I'm not really going anywhere with it. Nothing? All good. Thanks, Peter.
Well, thank you. And we'll make, we'll make those edits and we'll look forward to bringing this at a future first reading.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So go into a wide open question and answer if council has anything. Just put your little hand up. And Chris and Riley and Cola, everybody's here. Counselor McMillan.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. I have a question for Chris, please.
Go ahead, Carol.
Thank you. I just want to follow up with my email regarding the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. And I know that in your email, you mentioned that nothing has crossed your plate for a decision or anything. But they actually were in the process of having a couple of projects. And of course, I, and it's an advisory committee. But so what I'm kind of recommending is with Kim no longer being here, we do need a town representative on that committee. Because, for example, that committee was working collaboratively with the library board on a Martha Houston art endowment project. And they were busy doing that pre-COVID, as well as I know Kim had sent the, she had lined up First Nations meetings regarding the medicine tree piece. So I think, I don't know if you're considering Janelle, but we, we do need someone on that to act as a town rep because, and they're a dynamic group of people. And it's just, they were excited about working on these things. So.
Certainly, Counselor McMillan, we can certainly designate somebody for the interim. We do want to get this report back to council about the boards and committees that's been promised for, I think, over a year now. So we're getting very close to bringing that forward and probably by the end of September. And then I think that would probably prompt further discussion on what, what appointments will be necessary and what won't be necessary. So is there something that's imminent in the next two weeks that we do need to have a decision through this Arts and Cultural Committee or no?
I don't think there's anything imminent, but I guess my question would be with this, and I know we'll see it, but I just don't want arts and culture to be eliminated, like if with doing this reworking policy, because they are, I think it's a vital component to the community. And, you know, when you've got volunteers that have specifically applied for certain boards, that's where their passion and interests are.
Certainly, I think that's, that will be a great perspective bring forward, we bring forward the report for that discussion point. And hopefully, the 28th will be having that conversation.
Perfect. Thanks, Chris.
You bet. Thank you.
I don't have any other hands up, so I'll adjourn the committee of the whole meeting at 1:13 PM. Thank you very much.